All right, welcome to this afternoon's or evening's work session. First item of business is if Commissioner Hamburg would like to take anything and discuss in reference to the next meeting's agenda.
Uh, no, not right now.
All right, well, let's get into it. We will not have item number one. We will have the courthouse update by Judge Mack. How you doing, sir? Good to see you.
Good evening, Chair, and also Commissioner Hamburg. Good to see you again. Just want to give y'all some additional information regarding the jurors and the bailiffs. One of the things I think I want to make sure y'all not cringing about anymore is we don't keep jurors there at midnight and all those type of things that may have been led to think that. What happens is when we have jurors and they get the case at, say, before five o'clock, we always ask them, "You want to stay past five?" And they say, "Well, yes," then we let them deliberate. If they get it at five, after five, we still say, "Do you still want to deliberate or do you want to go home?" So they'd always give an opportunity to go home. I think there was something mentioned about a jury being out till midnight and all those type of things. Well, that's happened once in my eight years. It happened in my courtroom. The jury got the case at 5:30. Of course, this was the Thursday before Good Friday. And they said, "Well, Judge Mack, you know, can we stay?" I said, "Well, yeah, we'll check back on you." And they stayed until about seven o'clock. We checked on them again and said, "Look, Judge, tomorrow's Good Friday. We ain't going to work. We ain't planning on coming back here tomorrow, so we're going to finish this case. No matter how long it takes, we're going to stay." And so they stayed, wouldn't leave, and they stayed till 12:15, came back with a verdict. But that's the only time that's ever happened in the eight years I've been here, and another judge has gone that late. So it's not a routine thing that happens. They always get an opportunity. They decide if they want to stay late. Okay? So I want to make sure that y'all understood that. That is not the norm. That was an exception, but anytime it's after five, it's because the jurors themselves say, "We want to stay late. We want to finish this case because we don't want to come back tomorrow." Okay? Now, with regards to the bailiffs, the, uh, I think there was something about fifteen dollars an hour. I would ask you not to do that. Right now, our bailiffs work part-time, and we got enough of them right now to work part-time. And what we do is, the way it's set up right now, they get eighty dollars per diem. And they usually, we can make sure they just work twenty hours because it's part-time. And so they get their eighty dollars per diem. So if they're there, say, for example, twenty hours, we might give them four hours a day, and so they get eighty dollars per day. Okay? So if you gave them, if you try to give them fifteen dollars an hour, it'd be a cut in their pay, and we'd lose all of our bailiffs. Okay? Now, I do think when it comes to the grand jury bailiffs, they're usually there, I would say, probably at least six hours a day, but it's only one day. They're there on a Wednesday, and that's it. The other bailiffs that are there, they're there pretty much twenty hours a week. And the only ones that I am concerned about are the ones who are there for the jury. Like, for example, that one that stayed till midnight, those two had to stay till midnight because the jury was there till midnight. But when we have jury trials, we might need to look at doing something with those bailiffs because they are working as long as we're this. They're not working twenty hours a week. They may work forty hours that particular week when we have a jury trial. And we'd need to come up with some kind of way to compensate them because they're working, making, working forty hours, thirty to forty hours rather than twenty hours a week. And what I would recommend for those would be, like, maybe instead of eighty dollars per diem, per day, is to maybe give them a hundred dollars, which is twenty dollars, you know, extra per day for those jury trials. And so a hundred dollars per diem for those who have jury trials, it's only during jury trials, which are done probably once, once a week, I mean, excuse me, once a month normally by each judge. And so we could compensate those type bailiffs who are working thirty-five to forty hours a week when they're doing jury trial. That would be appreciated. But don't give them fifteen dollars an hour. Just leave it like it is. Just figure out a way to compensate those that are working thirty-five to forty hours as opposed to twenty hours.
So let me clarify something for my own identification. Uh, you have jury trial, there's, what, five of you?
Yes.
And each of you have a jury trial. Not, it's not on the same week, though, right?
Not on the same week. That's, that's correct. Sometime, but usually it's like maybe two of us that have it the same week. But let me say that even during jury trial week, we don't always have a jury trial. Okay? So most cases plea out rather than having a jury trial. So, um, we would average, I would tell you, we may average one jury trial. Uh, each judge may average, may average seven or eight jury trials a year, I would say.
Does that include state court also?
Now, state court, um, I'm not sure if they're average, but I would tell you, uh, they don't have that many jury trials because the, well, most of those are misdemeanors. Most of those cases plea out. A ton of them plea out. But they do have some. I'm not saying they don't have any, but they do have some, and when they do have them, usually it's a day or two, and it's over with. So those bailiffs are still working within that twenty-hour framework.
Superior Court case is usually a week? Or sometimes they're two or three days?
Sometimes, sometimes it's less. Okay? Most, most of the time, I would tell you, it's probably on the average, three days. Sometime, you know, we get, sometime we may have one that go two weeks, but that's rare. Okay? And sometime we have one that go all week. Okay? But I would tell you that maybe on the average, it may be three days on average. Once we get a jury picked and everything, take one day to get a jury picked, then usually two or three days for the trial if you get to the jury, the jury who makes the verdict. Okay? All right, but they're, they're there only because they choose to be later, and, uh, so if y'all can help us out with those jurors, those bailiffs who are actually doing jury trials, working more than that twenty hours a week.
Got you.
Okay? Any other questions?
You go ahead, Commissioner.
Uh... But it would be a recommendation from you all, is that correct?
Oh, yes, yes. Yes, we make a recommendation. Now, yeah, the way the statute is set up, though, is like a grand jury is supposed to make a recommendation, and then we, then it comes to you all, and you all approve it. Um, I, I would say since this is not applying to every, um, bailiff, that we probably could do it, just make a recommendation, kind of make a recommendation, form a recommendation to you all and have you all review, because it only applies to those bailiffs who are having jury trials, not all the bailiffs at the courthouse.
Right. And that makes sense. So I would ask that you put, reduce something to writing.
Okay.
With a recommendation.
Okay.
And please include the, who made the, uh...
The grand jury bailiff?
Yeah, the grand jury's findings as well.
Okay.
In that, and let's see if there's a way to mesh the two together, or at least to address.
Right.
When those circumstances do happen, that they are adequately compensated.
Okay.
I do have a question. Um, we finished the budget not too long ago. So was this something discussed before the budget process, or is this something you're presenting for the next budget process?
Well, it was not discussed before the budget process. It's only, it only came up again because it was asked before.
The, the grand jury findings.
Right.
Which happened after the budget, their president.
It was after the budget.
So, and it's, like I said, the information you provide will just be for our review, even if it is to consider for next budget cycle.
Right. And then, okay, and then also we'll try to, um, put some monetize it so you can have some idea of what we're looking at.
Absolutely.
Okay?
And, and again, we don't want to be misleading here. It's something that we definitely, well, I won't be here, but something that will more than likely be considered for the next budget.
For the next, that's great. Okay, that's correct.
Because we made a strong recommendation to all the departments and all.
Okay, I understand. I understand.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Thank you all very much.
Appreciate you.
Y'all helped me.
Thank you, Judge.
Chief Roberts, approval for a blight tax for Bladett County properties.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. I promised to be brief. I just wanted to give you an update. I was able to bring together members of the Quality of Life Task Force about a week ago. One of the agenda items was how could we enhance the quality of life in Clayton County as it related to dilapidated buildings or buildings in disrepair? And we were able to research historically that the board previously considered a blight tax, AKA community improvement tax incentive program, back in 2017. I believe when it was brought to the board, it was tabled to allow some time to see how our neighbors would do with their implementation of the blight tax. That was in seventeen. Here we now, here we are now in twenty-four, and we've seen activity from the city of Atlanta, I believe Cobb County, as well as relates to a blight tax. The purpose of the tax would be to hold those property owners accountable for their dilapidated buildings that are in disrepair and vacant, bringing blight to Clayton County and putting a black eye on our county. There seems to be, um, a lack of accountability in that arena, and this, too, this draft of the ordinance that you considered in seventeen, the Quality of Life Task Force is asking that you revisit the ordinance and consider putting it into place going forward. It calls for an elevated tax mileage rate for those delinquent property owners who have dilapidated properties in disrepair. It offers them the opportunity to remediate those challenges as determined by the public officer, which would be the Director of Community Development, and with that, an opportunity for change in the county as it relates to our property and our image.
This might be a hard question for you to answer, but do you have some kind of idea as to how many blighted properties are out there?
I do not, sir. That's an extensive list.
Can you go out there and count them one by one for me?
Sir? Well, you believe in being brief, Chair. If I start counting now, we can probably leave by ten o'clock.
Oh, man. Uh, yeah, uh, I just would want to gauge, and I know it's hard to gauge. That's why I started the question with, you might not be able to answer it, but at the same time, elevated tax on these blighted properties definitely get the homeowner's attention.
Well, it's not necessarily, let me be clear. It's not about homeowners.
Property owner.
There you go, because it doesn't impact those properties that have homes that are occupied on their property. We're really targeting those properties that are unaccounted for, vacant, and dilapidated for extensive years. And once again, there's an opportunity for remediation. This is about correction and bringing those properties up to code and bringing those buildings into a stat, status that is safe and well-being for the citizens of Clayton County.
Well, I haven't read this ordinance, what you presented to us, but with any kind of code enforcement action, we're seeking voluntary compliance. So within that, where those blighted properties, are we citing raw tobacco, or is there a ten-day, thirty-day, sixty-day grace period in which to bring your property back up to code?
Within this particular ordinance, there's a thirty-day window after the property owner is notified to consult with the public officer, who's the Director of Community Development, to develop a plan to bring the property into compliance. That is separate from any citations that that property may have already received from code enforcement. The properties that we are talking about will be severely delinquent and I'm sure have been notified by code enforcement. And I'll give you an example. That vacant hotel up down Old Dixie towards, uh, I-75, the owners are well aware of the condition of that property and have been so over a decade. It's unacceptable. We shouldn't be tolerating that as a county, and we need to hold them accountable. This is a tool to help us hold them accountable.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Chief.
Ma'am.
You touched on something, I want to get back to it in a few minutes, but, uh, has Major Green looked at this? Um, will it need some changes or update it, or will it be okay the way it was written in 2017?
You are so astute, Commissioner. Yes, uh, Attorney Green, Attorney Chuck Reed, Ward Nelson, and several other members of the task force were in the meeting. I'm sure that Attorney Reed and the other county attorneys will need to massage the wording because it dates back to 2017. We were just giving you this as a draft to go by, and I'm sure that Attorney Reed will prepare a document that's more timely.
Okay, okay. Now, back to what you were just saying about code enforcement. I had a meeting last night, and I wish Attorney Reed was here. Is he listening?
Me, too.
Is he? Okay. And it was really mostly code enforcement, and the residents were saying how they'd been complaining about the same residences for some of them over years. And what some of the folk have done, they are so, actually, as far as the law is concerned, and they know how to get around whatever ordinances and all we have, and we just keep going in circles with the same problem. I'm sure other neighborhoods, too, but I know this particular neighborhood because they have been complaining for a while, but they gave us a list of residences and all. And I want to get with somebody, I'm not sure if it would be a, a work session or what. Well, we can come up with something, either, um, for the attorneys and even for magistrate court, and also that these things can be resolved, you know, because they go on and on. They put, I don't know how many tags on the houses, you know, four citations, five citations, and it's just a evolving, uh, thing. So we need to do something because it's really embarrassing. I was just sitting there thinking, you know, I mean, I know you all have reported it to us and over and over, but the same kind of thing.
I see the COO approaching.
And nothing has been resolved.
I will step aside.
So thank you for bringing that up.
Yes, ma'am.
So as Chief talked specifically about figuring out ways that the blight tax will help us in the space, the challenge that we've had with the citations is that once that citation is now given to the court, the adjudication process is reset every time. So what happens is that individuals, say they're in compliance, they're going to do what they need to do, court system goes through the process, they find another issue with that process, it's reset again. So to your point, they figure out a way to either prolong it in the court system or it's become a bigger issue. The value with the blight, the blight tax is that hopefully, even if it's in court, it doesn't change the fact that they still are responsible for making that payment or whatever that fine might be, even if it's something that's being adjudicated through the court system. So one of the benefits of the blight tax is that it doesn't negate the fact that something is in the, in the pipeline with the court system. It's still, it's a responsibility of that property owner to still be in compliance with the payment. So we're hoping that this will give us another tool to be able to address some of those concerns, and then hopefully get the properties back up to a part that we all are comfortable with.
And I understand that. And it's two different issues. I understand that about the blight tax. But I'm saying something that we need to address is the other side of, of just property owners just not abiding by rules we already have in place as far as code enforcement.
Well, that's what he's saying. It's a civil action, and it has to...
No, no, no. This has nothing to do with the blight tax.
No. You're talking about regular code enforcement.
I'm talking regular code enforcement action.
Too tall, grass and, and other stuff.
Right. Over and over, or people working on cars.
That's right. That's a civil action. Once the citation is, is given to that individual owner, then they have to go to court, they have got ten-day grace period on some cases, they might fix it up just enough, and then it's a revolving cycle, as you said. And then their code enforcement go back out and notice that the grass is up high again. Again, it's a court action, and unless, create, uh, help me unless I'm wrong here, that there's nothing that says that if you get five citations for grass being too tall, uh, then we can go ahead and cite you and, and, and fine you right away. You still have to go through the adjudication process with every citation that you have.
And that's fine and good. That's my, that's the problem.
So what I'm...
We have something, but we need to do something else with what we have.
So what I'm hearing Commissioner Hamburg say is our process is flawed as it relates to code enforcement investigation. So what I'll do with that particular topic is reconvene the task force to include the magistrate court judge and the leaders of code enforcement, and see if we can't enhance that with some more stringent requirements for those repeat offenders. Because the neighbors are correct, and the commissioner is correct. Once you learn how to maneuver the game, you create a level of frustration in those respective neighborhoods, and we don't want that. So yes, ma'am, I will take that back as a different item of, uh, discussion for agenda purposes, and we will, uh...
Include state court, too, because that was mentioned several times.
Okay.
That sometime these, uh, issues go to state court. And I'm not sure about, uh, the solicitor's office or not. Nobody was really sure or clear on that. So we need some clarity on, once it leaves code enforcement, what happens? You know? But the people are doing the same thing.
But I will say, one of the things that the tools that the magistrate court does have is the escalation of fees. So they might give them a hundred dollars, and I think the max out is a thousand dollars. So each infraction will incur an, an additional charge or a higher fee as they go through court.
And Chairman, last night they were saying that two neighbors they have will go and pay those fees and say, "Hey, I'd rather pay the fee than..."
Than have to do that, that's right.
Right. So they're, they're paying the fee, that, that's no big deal to them.
To your point, when we talk about processes, that may be revisiting the fee schedule related to repeat offenders, and I'll be sure to bring that up in the meeting.
Please.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
And if that's a situation that has to be changed at the state level, because I think they go by the international code or something like that.
Yes, sir.
So I don't know if that's state law. I don't recall all that. But if so, then we need to know about that sooner than later so we can get with, uh, our state legislators.
Yes, sir. We will make it so.
Okay. So that sounds like it's going to be within the next thirty days or...
The meeting? Yes, ma'am. The meeting for that agenda item, I'll make it within the next two weeks, contingent upon availability of the members.
Okay. And like the Chairman said, if it's something that our legislators can take up or need to take up for this next session, then hopefully they'll find out and, and work something out before January one or whenever session starts.
Yeah, because truly, it's not the only prob, that problem is not only in Clayton County. I'm sure it's throughout the state, so.
Yes, sir.
Well, I don't want it in Clayton County.
None of us do.
Do we know that? Got it.
But for the state to be involved, it has to be statewide, if you're going to make it along. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. So Chairman and Commissioners, so I will add, you're good point, Commissioner, as it pertains to, um, it potentially being a legislative agenda. Since we're still trying to get to a point to adopt a legislative agenda to get to the, to the actual delegation, this would be a good opportunity to get that information in hand, so if we can put some stronger teeth in the language, then so be it.
If needed, yeah.
Right.
Thank you.
Yeah. If we can do it ourselves, then definitely do it. Parks and Recreation overview, Director Horn.
Okay, good evening, Chairman, Commissioner Hamburg, and Commissioner Reeves. Thank you again for your opportunity to serve as the Director of Parks and Recreation. I'm here tonight to provide you an overview of our department and my assessment in my first ninety days as the department head. So let's start with a few fun facts about us. So currently, we have seventy-seven full-time and a hundred and eighty-five part-time active employees in our department. Um, as the summer ends, we decrease our number of employees due to seasonal hires. So my very first day, I had three hundred and eighty-six employees, but we're down to, um, our fall in our regular numbers. We have over a thousand acres of green space and parkland. We have sixteen parks, four trail systems, one nature preserve, one wildlife sanctuary, five recreation centers, five swimming pools, one water park, Lake Spivey, that everyone loves, twenty-five tennis courts, and we have six true pickleball courts. Flat Shores Park and Lovejoy Park have pickleball, but the courts are dislined for pickleball. But we have two, six true, um, pickleball courts at the tennis center at Lake Spivey, um, International Park. I'm sorry. Skip the slide. So our mission in Parks and Recreation is to foster leisure activities, pursuits, and experiences through the provision of safe and well-maintained park system, comprehensive and affordable recreation programs and facilities to the residents of Clayton County. Our vision is to engage and connect communities through people, parks, program, and programs by providing a diverse offering of events and activities within our parks and facilities while enhancing the quality of life for the residents of Clayton County. Some of our departmental goals are listed here. Not only are our goals aligned with our mission and vision of our department, they are aligned with the strategic direction and the strategic pillars set forth by the Board of Commissioners. So our first goal is to provide a safe and well-maintained Parks and Recreation, Parks and Recreation facilities, which is strategic pillar, quality of life. To provide quality programs and services to residents, visitors, and employees of Clayton County, which is strategic pillar, quality of life. And to continue to apply for outside grant funding to support the department's mission and vision, which is strategic pillar, fiscal responsibility. So as we begin to progress through the third quarter, you will begin to see, um, our performance indicators to see how that we, to see how we meet those goals through our Clayton Port Performance Review. In my first ninety days, we completed a SWOT analysis of our department, which is our strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. Not only did I do it from a department level, I asked our administrators, my division heads, to create a SWOT analysis of their departments or their divisions, just so that we could see where they were and how in line they were with my observations and things that we needed to improve on. So this is a collective effort of the department, not just my observation, but those from my executive team as well. So our strengths are executive-level expertise. My executive team has been with the department roughly ten years or more collectively, and they are very expertise in their, their areas of, um, management. We have a committed staff that's there to do the work. They're committed to providing services to the constituents. Our program offerings are very diverse within the recreation centers and within the parks. We are a support department. Not only are we a service department to the community, but we are a support department to our internal and external stakeholders. And what I mean by that is when you call us for something, Parks and Recreation has it. We have jumbotron's, we have mobile stages, we have tables, chairs, tablecloths, you name it, we have it. So we're not only a service department, but we are a sort, support department as well. Um, our trail system is a strong sin, um, strength for us with Clayton Connects. We, um, definitely see a lot of people walking on our trails, and as you'll see in our projects as we're finishing up some trail projects in Rivers Edge, and I'll show those to you later. And then we're heavily engaged in our communities. The staff, the team there, they're, they're actively involved in trying to see what they can do to better their communities, um, every day. One of our weaknesses is that we have inexperienced middle management. So below the executive level, our middle management, they're, they're younger, um, they're new to, some, some of them are new to their roles, some of them are new to Parks and Recreation, and there just needs to be a little bit of nurturing there to get them to where they need to be. We have an aging infrastructure in terms of our recreation centers have gotten older, and there's some work that needs to be done in our recreation centers as well as in our parks. So our infrastructure is aging, and we need to kind of vamp that up. Qualified volunteers for our youth sports, in our youth sports program, we do have a few disconnects with some of our volunteers, and just making sure that they're able and equipped to volunteer and work with our, with our athletes is a, is a priority of ours. Um, interdepartmental rule conformance, we have, we have some areas where we need to sharpen up in our rule conformance in terms of our policies and procedures and SOPs within our own department. So we have some issues there. And our reactionary communication, ma'am.
SOPs?
Yes, ma'am. Standard operating procedures, I'm sorry. And, um, in our, we have reactionary communication. So we're working more to be a little more proactive for things in our department versus being reactive to those things, coming up with solutions to issues and problems that we may have, so that it'll minimize some of our complaints and concerns. Opportunities that we have for our department right now are professional development. Currently, I have staff at the National Recreation and Parks Association Conference as well as the Water Park Conference, so that they can show up on some of their skills and get some training from other, um, individuals across the nation in terms of Parks and Recreation. We will be doing some internal training in terms of interpersonal skills and customer service. That's a big one. Outdoor recreation and environmental education opportunities. Again, with us coming on with our trail system, we have some opportunities to create some environmental education and outdoor recreation programming in terms of, um, the, how do you work in the environment and keep our environment clean? And we'll be innovating some classrooms and trying to work with the school system to have, um, children come out on the trails and work with our office, our Office of Green Space. Parks and facility improvements, and I'll show you later on where we're having, where we're doing projects right now to improve our parks and some of our facilities, to make them a little more inclusive, to make them more accessible, and to make them enjoyable to, um, the community. We have grants, grant, I'm sorry, we inquired quite a few grant funding as well as SPOCH[1779.88] as well as splash funding within our department to help fund some of these projects that we're working on. And then partnerships and collaborations, a lot of times we try to offset costs for our programs by collaborating with other agencies within the county. And then another opportunity for us is to restructure our department, and you'll see that in some of our goals. Threats, some of those are threats, and then some of them are challenges, but just for the sake of the SWOT, the two challenges ended up falling under threats. But one of the biggest threats in our department currently is illegal dumping. When our parks departments are coming out in the mornings and after going on the weekend, we have a lot of community trash within our parks. And what I want the community to realize is that when you're dumping your trash or you're leaving your trash outside of the trash can, the waste management company won't pick it up. So then it becomes environmental and a public health issue for us, is my staff doesn't know what's in your trash? And then if your trash is leaking, a lot of our parks have streams and waterways in them, so whatever is leaking in your trash is leaking into our soil. So as we talk about opportunities and ways to combat that, beginning November sixteenth, we'll start at Independence Park, we'll be doing community park service days, where we're asking the community to come out and help us police the parks. And within that, we'll be having an environmental education class with you during that time to talk about the environmental effects of your trash, our trash, being on the parks and things that we can do better. So that'll be some things that you'll see rolling out to kind of help educate the public about illegal dumping of trash in our park spaces. The conduct at youth sports activities has been a threat to us, especially during football season. We've kind of gotten away from, we're here for the kids. And I want, it's important that we let our parents and our coaches know that we're here for the kids, and some of the things that we like to do in parks just shouldn't be done with our children. So a way that we're combating those things is Officer Joe Eckler and Officer Pam Green have worked with us to revamp our security protocols within our parks. So what you'll start seeing is a few different things than what you've seen before, you'll see more officers in our parks. We'll be asking, especially during basketball season, that you're bringing clear bags into the parks. We will be, or they have been, asking you to open your bags, we'll be cracking down on some of the smoking and the drinking that's going on in our parks. So hopefully you'll see a change in the conduct at some of our youth sports events coming up here shortly. A challenge for us are the fees and charges for our parks events and space and equipment, and this is particular to external stakeholders. When we're, when they're asking to utilize some of our equipment and some of our spaces, so I think that's just a bigger conversation that we need to have in terms of what those fees and charges should be. And then contractors providing timelines to us has been a challenge in terms of when they're doing projects, and we're trying to work within our programming or our sport season, when will those projects be completed? Or when will those projects start? So those are just a few things from our SWOT analysis. Here you'll see a list of projects that we're currently working on, that we spoke about, that I spoke about earlier. We're currently overseeing approximately twenty-point-seven million dollars in projects, and those projects are listed here. The projects are funded through the splash dollars, they're funded through community block grant funds. The Environmental Protection Division Tire Grant has provided funding for us to resurface our playgrounds. So where you see playground replacements, those playgrounds not only will be replaced, but their surfacing will be replaced as well through this tire grant. So we're trying to make sure that we are remaining environmentally friendly in our play spaces. And then lastly, the pocket parks that you see listed, they were funded from splash and then from the State of Georgia Improving Neighborhood Outcomes Grant. So those are some things that you'll start seeing online in our Parks and Recreation spaces. Here are a list of our goals currently, our short-term goals as well as our long-term goals. I talked earlier about the restructuring of our department, and the restructure is to streamline, create consistency in the workflow, and to create a line of succession for employee retention. We'll be visiting all of our parks here in the next month, just to do an inventory of some of our park spaces. I think I've mentioned before that some of our basketball goals could use some attention. So we pay a lot of attention to our community parks and to our regional park, but we're gonna drill down and pay a little more attention to our neighborhood parks, so that we can make sure we show up on those amenities. Additionally, we're looking to update our master plan, our master plan has not been updated. It was first drafted in two thousand eight, and it's outdated now, so we need to do a new master plan for the county. Long-term goals is to install our first all-inclusive playground, although our playgrounds are inclusive in a way, in our parks, we're looking to do an all-inclusive playground, which would allow the children that use mobility devices to be able to access the play apparatus. So we're looking to install our first all-inclusive playground in the county as a long-term goal. Develop and implement an environmental education program with outdoor classrooms, as I talked about earlier. As we work through our trail development, the Rivers Edge Trail on the Phase Three has a structure, it looks like a pavilion, that we can use as an outdoor program, programming space, and hopefully partner with the neighboring elementary schools to bring the children out on the trail. So it'll give a dual-purpose use besides just walking. And then to develop a competitive sports complex. So we're also working on a Picture Your Park campaign. Hopefully you all have seen the signs up around, and you've seen them in your emails. So as we're working through the pocket parks, we're trying to determine the best signage in our park for our users. It's easy for us to kind of navigate our ways through our parks as we work there, and we know where everything is. So we're really asking the community to engage in this campaign and vote for your favorite sign. So we'll be running this campaign through October twenty-first. So please, 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 October twenty-fourth, I'm sorry, so please, 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 make sure that you vote. Just scan the QR code, and you can pick your favorite option, still not sure what mine is yet, but you have until the twenty-fourth to decide. And then lastly, as I conclude, please indulge me as I remove my director's hat to showcase my certified recreation therapist crown. If you will, those of you that are present in the audience, or even in the online audience, if you would just take a moment, and if you'll go through this exercise with me, and it just kind of will show you where we would like to be in our parks. So I ask that you just close your eyes, and if you don't want to close your eyes, just go deep down into your imagination. I'm asking that you picture your park, whatever that looks like, wherever you recreate, wherever you would like to be, or for some, and any that you would like to add to our park. And whatever you're doing as you picture your park, understand and recognize that that is recreation. And what we really want the takeaway to be from that is that you know that you belong here within our park system. So thank you again for the opportunity, and that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions?
Any questions from Ms. Horn?
Uh, yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, the illegal dumping.
Yes, ma'am.
Are the parks locked at night or at certain times?
No, ma'am, some of our parks have gates where you can't access, like at Flat Shows you can't access the bottom due to a gate. Some of the parks do not. So in those situations where there is no gate, or you can still gain access to the park, that's where the dumping is occurring.
So we'll be working on that?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, we do have cameras that are installed, some are, but we have to use the solar cameras, so they're not always ideal in some of those areas. We do have one park patrol, security park patrol person, we have one more position that we can hire, so we can begin to rotate the park security outside to the different parks, as well as work with park maintenance to make sure that we're opening and closing gates where we can.
Because I know we had that problem with the, with the tires and bringing their trash. And when you start locking the gates, you know, I'm not sure if it was alleviated, but it slowed.
To piggyback off of her question, whose responsibility is it to lock the gates when they close up at night?
Well, that's a kind of tricky question, it kind of depends, it could be park maintenance, or it could be athletic maintenance staff, if there's athletics, that's staff there. And again, we're working towards having our park security play more of a role in assisting with that as well.
Lock it, whether it's parks maintenance or park patrol. Because each other think that the other is locking, or supposed to lock it up, then might go without being locked up, so.
Yes, sir, we'll make sure.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Oh, yes, signage.
Yes, ma'am.
Is this the signage gonna be in all the parks? Because I know when I go up to Flat Shows, you know, you really have to have a microscope to see what's going on. So is this signage for all the parks?
So the goal right now is to start with that signage within the pocket parks, but then as Assistant Director Stubbs and I kind of massage through and look where we are budgetarily, once we decide on it, whatever the sign is gonna be, we're gonna strategically make sure that that's, the sign is uniform throughout our system. Yes, ma'am.
And the VIP building or the Lakeview?
Yes, ma'am.
Building.
Lakeview Event Center.
Is it, are we gonna go past the new year, or what's the schedule for that?
Currently, as far as I know, we're still closing on December thirty-first. If building and maintenance, if Director Hopkins or Director Rogers has a different timeline, then they'll let me know, but right now, we're still closing December thirty-first.
Is that being put on your site? Okay, well, because I got a call just today with someone wanting to plan something for twenty-twenty-five.
We're not taking any reservations right now for twenty-twenty-five for Lakeview. If you want to use pavilions, you can, but for the event center, no, ma'am, because as of right now, December thirty-first, we'll be closed.
And we're closing it because?
We're having construction, we're gonna renovate the amphitheater in the back, and renovate the bathrooms, and it's gonna be state-of-the-art and lovely. I should have put a rendering, but I'll email it to you so you can see it, so that's why we're closing.
Commissioner Reeves.
Oh, thank you for your presentation.
You're welcome.
I personally enjoyed the, and I've seen the signage for folks to be able to vote on what they want the signage to look like in the pocket parks. And as you all are, as you're doing your analysis of existing parks, and updates on existing parks and then creating the new pocket parks, I'm curious about what, how the community can assist you. I know you said you all are going out to do site visits on all of the parks, I don't know. Are there community suggestion boxes? Is this something that comes through the Parks and Recreation Board, through the commission, or how do you all get input from the community on the parks?
I think a couple of things have happened in my first ninety days. I have gotten suggestions through my advisory board. At our last meeting, our advisory board members, the community has been good at reaching out to them and giving them ideas and concerns. No, we have not put a suggestion box anywhere, but that is certainly a good idea. And moving forward, there will be opportunities for you to sit down and have intimate conversations with me about what your desires are for the community, to be able to just one-on-one, talk to me, and I'll be able to take those suggestions from them as well. But the community boxes are a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you for using your board.
Yes, ma'am.
Your Parks and Recreation.
And I have a board member here tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Ms. Seale. So we all know that Ms. Horn has done a phenomenal job, but she mentioned, Commissioner, the master plan. So when we're doing an update on the master plan, which again, hadn't been done since two thousand and eight, that has a community element in place. So they have community sheriffs, the person that's doing the master plan will get input from the community as well about some of the enhancements that need to be made. So if that's approved, or she hits the funding for that at some point in time, that will have a community element in place to help get the word out about, you know, some of the other elements the community would like to see through that master plan update.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation.
All right, you're welcome.
All right.
And thank you for the improvements.
All right, next up is Anthem Self-Funded Medical Renewal.
Were we not doing game changers?
Excuse me, no game changers.
That would have been a good follow-up.
Yeah. I'm sorry?
Did I miss the CFO?
Yes. That was number one.
I know.
Well, how you know you didn't miss it?
Because it could have been five minutes longer.
Yeah, we had no questions. No, we didn't have that one, we didn't have the game changer. Yes, Ms. Ambles.
Well, good evening Clayton County Board of Commissioners, and good evening to our Clayton County citizens. I'm Pam Ambles, the HR Director, and this is Ms. Angela Woods, the manager of Benefits Administration and Workers Compensation. At some point, Ms. Woods will be doing more of the presenting. I want to start out by thanking the board, as well as thanking former Commissioner Franklin and Chair-elect Anderson Henry for you all's approval of our premium discount program. I want to share a real quick story about one of our employees before we get into that. And you see, I'm wearing my wellness shirt. We have an employee who came to me and said, Director Ambles, we appreciate the premium discount. This employee typically used his benefits when he needed them, not for prevention, like we want them to do. So to take advantage of the discount, he did have to go select a primary care doctor and have the different test, and he found out that he was, that he is a diabetic. That is wellness at its best, because that, him knowing that upfront allows him to get the care that he needs, which will reduce cost for the county, as well as getting the care that he needs also improves the quality of his life. So I want to thank you all, as well as Commissioner Franklin and Chair-elect Henry Anderson for your support, Anderson Henry, for your support of our wellness program. So we thank you for that. This is the last piece of our twenty-twenty-five benefit mix, which is the self-funded. And I'm going to turn the presentation over to Marsh and McClellan, and I want to thank them too for the hard work that they have done. So with that being said, I'm gonna call Mr. Jack Thompson up. Ms. Angela, did I forget anything, or did you have anything to add?
You covered everything.
All righty, thank you all.
Good evening Chairman Turner, Commissioners Hambrook and Reeves. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening, it's an honor for sure. As Director Ambles said, we are certainly here to renew the last piece of it, piece of your Employee Benefit Mix. This is the Commercial Medical Plan, it's administered by Anthem, and your stop-loss insurance is with Voya. Your active employees, their spouses, and their children, as well as their retirees, the early retirees are covered under this particular medical plan. This plan has more moving parts to it, and hopefully I'll do a nice job explaining this at a very high level. We're first gonna talk about the stop-loss marketing. We have a Center of Excellence that Marsh McClellan uses nationally. They have hundreds of clients that are self-funded, the size of the county and larger. And so every year, we market your stop-loss insurance. If you think of your claims, your medical and your pharmacy claims as the gas pedal, meaning cost of your medical plan, medical and pharmacy plan, the stop-loss insurance are the brakes. And we'll talk more specifically about that along the way, but a very important component of the overall program. We'll also talk about the administration of your plan. As I mentioned, Anthem is the administrator, and they pay the claims, have the website, the physician and hospital networks, et cetera, we'll talk more about that. And then finally, the final decisions, once you put all of that together, and the cost to the county as well as to your employees. So in terms of the stop-loss insurance, as I mentioned, we have hundreds of clients the size of the county and larger. And so we have a panel of carriers, stop-loss insurance carriers, that specialize in stop-loss insurance. Anthem, your current administrator, certainly offers stop-loss insurance. BCS, Berkshire Hathaway, Granular, HM Group, QBE, Sun Life, Swiss Re, So Metro, Tokyo Marine, and Voya. Those carriers collectively write about seventy percent of all of the stop-loss insurance in the country. If you look down at the bottom on Slide Three, and you have this in your handout that we've provided, you'll see that there are four carriers that actually quoted. Anthem quoted, Granular issued a quote, Tokyo Marine, HCC quoted, and Voya quoted as well. The other carriers declined to quote because of some rather significant claims within your group. Over to the left-hand side, you have a specific stop-loss deductible. And what this means is that for every individual employee, is that for every individual, employee, spouse, and children, they all stand on their own. And the county pays claims up to $175,000 per individual. And then after that time, the carrier, Voya, steps in and pays all of the claims in excess of that. You're going to see in a minute that we're going to recommend that the county raise that specific deductible to a higher level. We think you're, you're being a little too conservative and we are going to suggest that you raise that specific deductible. So we ask for quotes or $200,000 and $225,000 as well. The contract basis is 3612, meaning that claims that are incurred in 2023, 2024, and 2025 and become payable in 2025 are covered under this contract. It's a very comprehensive-type policy. And again, we're looking out for the cash flow of the county. The policy period is 12 months, meaning for the 2025 calendar year. And all of these results are firm. We have to work diligently in order to get the carriers to firm up or lock in the rates. And we finally were able to do that literally last week. There's a lot of words on here. I had intended that this slide be replaced. And so in your handout, I have an abbreviated version of this. The county's stop-loss renewal, your current stop-loss carrier with Voya, is calling for a 40% increase. The standard practice is for us to market this diligently as we do every year. The primary reason for this is because of the loss ratio. Through eight months of this year, this loss ratio is 143%. And what I mean by that is for every dollar of premium that you've paid to Voya, they've paid out a dollar and 43 cents. So that's not a very good loss ratio. Additionally, as you get later in the year, more people hit that specific deductible. We expect that loss ratio to deteriorate. There is a contractual provision that we mandate all of our panel carriers to have, which is a rate cap and a no-new laser rider. A laser is a situation where an insurance carrier could say, for all of your employees except for that one individual, they have $175,000 specific deductible. But for that individual, it's a $500,000 deductible, meaning that the county's responsible for the excess amount. We don't have any of that with Voya and we negotiate that and we put a rate cap in. So when I say stop-loss insurance are the brakes of your medical plan, that's very much an accurate statement. The three carriers, Anthem, Granular, and Tokyo Marine that quoted, all of them had lasers. All of this speaks to the health conditions within your group. Voya's quote was the most competitive. It does not have any lasers and it also has a rate cap next year. It has, they guarantee us now that in the 1-1 January 1st, 2026 renewal, a rate cap of 40% and they cannot laser your contract. So again, those are contractual provisions, a little granular, but we're looking after the county's cash flow in that regard. So again, we're going to suggest that you consider raising your specific deductible. If I can press this button correctly. One more time. Okay. Director Ambles is particularly likes benchmarking information. I do as well. And so here are some two benchmarking slides. If you look at the chart down at the bottom right-hand corner, Clayton County's specific deductible right now is $175,000 as I've mentioned. We benchmark that against 20 peers, county governments of similar size in our book, and their stop-loss, specific stop-loss limit is $270,000. So we think it's appropriate for the county to take on a little more risk. And in doing so, you lower the stop-loss premium. I've always been a believer, you buy exactly as much insurance as you need and not a dime more. And so we're going to suggest that the county be a little more aggressive and we'll talk more about that along the way. Additionally, we benchmark your rate and it's in the 150 range and that's very much in line with what we see with the rest of our book of business. So from marketing your plan every year, we have a very good idea of what the rate should be. Again, we think you ought to take a little more risk. So here's the administration renewal. You pay a fee to Anthem every single month in order to administer the claims, to have the website, to do all of the medical management. Can you forward that to the next slide for me? Thank you. So currently, your rate is 56.56 per employee per month times 1,087 employees each month, and that will increase to 58.17. So it's a 3% increase for $21,000 a year in administration. So your annual administration fees are $758,000. I will say that about half of that administration fee is actually to fund your wellness plan, wellness and technology. Last year, it was at $280,000 plus additional $75,000 from Caroline, your pharmacy benefit administrator. I called and said, you guys need to tweak that because more employees continue to move to the Anthem plan, migration out of the Kaiser plan. And so they agreed and raised that to $300,000. We also were able to get $125,000 of wellness money from Caroline, your pharmacy benefit administrator. And I'm quite sure that Director Ambles and Edward Lance, your wellness coordinator, have got great plans for that money. Here is the stop-loss renewal. All right. So we've talked about previously that the current stop-loss renewal is a 40% increase. The reason for this is because of the rather significant loss ratio. Through August of this year, you had 11 claimants over that $175,000 specific deductible. In all of last year, you had 11 claims over that specific deductible at a 98% loss ratio. So when I said that your claims experience has deteriorated, it has and it will get worse as we finish out the end of the year. I think it is time to raise the deductible. The 40% increase is equivalent to $790,000. So if you keep the $175,000 specific deductible, your stop-loss premium would be $2,766,000 based on 1,087 employees. Again, it includes the no-new laser and the rate cap next year. If you, can you move that forward? Thank you. If you increase your specific stop-loss premium to two, or limit rather, to $200,000, then that will lower the stop-loss renewal to about 18.7%. It's a $369,000 increase. So your total premium would be $2,345,000, again with the same rate cap and no-new laser renewal. So in the final analysis, in terms of costs, if you can forward that one more time, thank you. This year, the budget, our actuarial department does a budget every single year about this time for next year. And then we track it every single month. Tanisha Gamblin on my team is responsible for pushing that out to the HR colleagues. And so our budget for 2024, your administration is $737,000. Your specific stop-loss premium is just under $2 million. Your medical and pharmacy claims are $14,819,000. And your pharmacy rebates are budgeted at about almost $1.1 million. So when you do the math, it's 16.45 million. The split remains the same, 78 for the county, 22 for the employees. So you can see just under $13 million for county spend. Next year, if you increase your specific deductible, take on a little more risk. We think that's very appropriate. You'll pay less, the administrative fees go up slightly. You'll pay less in specific stop-loss premiums. But when you do that, your claims go up, your projected claims. If you're taking on more risk, we expect you to pay more claims. That's okay. I'd rather do that. We look at the break-even analysis and you're well within acceptable ratios. We think you'll save some money by increasing your specific stop-loss deductible. Additionally, we do market your pharmacy benefits as well. And we did that through MMA R X Solutions, our pharmacy consulting team. And so it's not ironic that your pharmacy, projected pharmacy rebates go from 1.1 million to about $1,569,000. So when you do all the math, the total, projected total, the budget is $17.4 million. That's about a 6% increase. And you'll recall, when we did the Kaiser commercial presentation, I'm recalling, you remember that increase? It's, it was more competitive. The Anthem renewal was more competitive than the Kaiser renewal this year. So we were encouraged to see that. And again, the 78-22 split is about $13,653,000. And again, it's an overall renewal of about 6%. What questions do you have or any comments around the presentation?
All right, any questions?
I don't have a question, but thank you for the comparison from 2024 to 2025. And I know it's estimate basically, but yeah, thank you for that because that was going to be one of my questions, you know, what's the difference from 2024. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Reeves? Well, I think my question might actually be for Ms. Ambles. What is the, what's the deadline for us to make the decision to either move forward with the recommendation or stay where we currently are?
She's looking like she's going to say last one.
We try to provide as much information as we, as we possibly can. So we are bringing the presentation to the board today. It's on the agenda next week for vote. We've been, we've been bringing it in kind of pieces to you all because we're constantly negotiating. We're constantly waiting for claims data so that the carriers can give us firm numbers, as Jack said. We don't want to bring hypothetical numbers to the board. We want to make sure we're bringing you the numbers as they will be. So we're always at a, in this situation, it seems like we're always at a, in a rush mode to get open enrollment going, to get system changes going and all of that stuff. So this is the last piece. Everything else you all have approved and we're ready to go with this, but this is with, with 2025 except this last piece. And we had to wait for claims data to get the stop-loss numbers and all of that. And we will be doing our quarterly, we will restart our quarterly presentations to the board in 2025. That way, the board is aware of the different things that are going on before we even get to this point. We started that, Angela, was it last year, the year before? I think it was the year before we started giving updates to the board on a quarterly basis. So we will be starting that back. So when we get here, the board will have some idea of where we are.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
You're welcome.
All right. Thank you, Jeff, for your presentation. Did you have anything else? Okay, I see you're coming back up. I was about to say, all right, thank you, Ms. Ambles and your team that you're doing for our employees. All right, that was the last presentation and there being no other, we stand adjourned. Have a good evening.